We're signing up with Meredith. She's our secretary. If you'd like to be included in our email distribution list. As I said, I'm the chair of the Republican Liberty Caucus of Lake and Sumter County. I'd like to ask you to please silence your cellphones if you could. In fact, I always like to say if your cellphone goes off here in the meeting, it's an automatic $25 donation to the Republican Liberty Caucus here in Lake and Sumter County. I hear from each candidate on how they intend to fulfill the mission of our caucus. Most importantly, and unlike the Republican Party, our caucus can and will actively support any Republican candidate that aligns with our mission. And I'd like the audience to know that our program tonight, which you have on your sheet in front of you, the candidates will go through an introduction. And at the completion of that introduction, we'll have a question and answer session from the audience. And each of you has an index card at your table. And if you would like to ask a question, if you could write it out. And Francesca and Sam will be rolling the audience. Let them know they'll come pick it up and give it to me to ask the candidates. And we'll be accepting questions until the candidate introduction is over. Just raise your hand and Francesca and Sam will come get you. I'd also like to introduce Jan Smith. She's our timekeeper. She's going to keep us all on track tonight. Let's give Jan a big hand.
I have a time clock that keeps track, so I'll click it when you start. And when we get to 30 seconds, I'll give you a quick...
Very good. We're going to have to speak loudly in the room. We have no microphone. Hopefully you guys can hear me, okay? Not be hoarse by the time the night's over. At this time, I'd like us to welcome each of our candidates with applause. From the city of Claremont, we have Joe Gustafson, seat two. Jim Burris from Claremont, seat two. Edboh Nsua, seat four. Mr. Senior Groveland, Mike Smith, District four. Mr. Minneola, Paul Giacalone, seat five. Joe Saunders, seat five. Nick Jerome is just now...
No. That's not him.
He's on his way. Nick Jerome from Mount Dora. From the city of Taveris, David Boilston. Lou Buegas, seat two. James, let me know if I get this right. Sweater?
You got it.
Seat two. Alan Cool, seat two. Walter Price, seat five. Troy Singer, seat four. And this is Alan Hartle. Now we begin with the candidate introductions. Again, I'd like to remind the audience... Nick is here. Very good. Come on up and just introduce you. Nick, we got you a seat and everything.
Thank you. Sorry I'm late.
Nick told me that they were doing a walk over there in Mount Dora tonight
and commemorating the 9/11 tragedy. So I was there with them for a while tonight. So I apologize for being late.
Welcome, Nick.
Thank you.
It's $25 you got.
Silence your cellphones if you could, please. And also, everybody needs to speak loudly because we've got a big room and we want to make sure everybody can hear everyone. Even those guys that are hard to hear like me.
What?
Very good. Again, I'd like to remind the audience as we go through our candidate introductions, if you would like to ask a question of a candidate, use the index card that's on your table there. And let Francesca and Sam know. Just raise your hand and they'll come and grab your question. Thank you. Now we'll allow each candidate two minutes for introductions and comments on how they intend to advance the principles of limited government, free enterprise, personal liberty, personal responsibility. And what I've done is I've gone in alphabetical order by city and by candidate last name. So I'm going to begin with the city of Claremont, Joe Gustafson, seat two. You have two minutes, sir.
Okay. First, thank you. Good afternoon. I'm going to speak to you folks. I don't think I covered that topic in two minutes, but I'll do my best. I'm going to set for Florida about 20 years, 21 wrote a six. I'm a graduate of the State University of maritime college with a post-grad license of old age review of all geasonography and a mention in the United States National Reserve. I spent four years sailing. I spent about 25, 26 working for the telephone. When I left, I was managing director of old business market development. I then was asked to join a consulting firm when I took over the private package as the CEO or managing partner. I did that a bunch of years. But I wanted to do some public service and volunteer work. I've been doing that for quite a while. I was chairman of a 501(c)(3) foundation. I raised money for about $1 million in 15 years for about 16, 17 open charities. The last seven years, we raised money and built mortgage-free homes for disabled veterans and their families. We built the house, paid the key, paid the mortgage. Since that time, I've done a lot of charity work and volunteer work as far as supporting the mission, absolutely. 100% in favor of what you folks are trying to do. I don't think it's going to be easy to accomplish the implementation of that mission. I think it needs a lot more work and time. And the reason is, as the generations change and instant gratification becomes part of that lower, that younger generation issue, it's tough to get them to be accountable. I'm not sure I can get any deeper than that with only 30 seconds left. Suffice it to say, if I'm elected to the city council in Claremont, people who apply for applications for buildings and other changes, they will be held accountable at least for following the rules that exist at the time. That's their job. Thank you for your time.
All right, Jim Burris, seat two.
Thank you, everybody, for the opportunity to address you tonight. I see a couple of familiar faces in the crowd. Tim, good to see you. Ben, long time. Briefly, born and raised in the Philadelphia metropolitan area. La Salle College before it became a university. I dated myself now. Migrated to Florida permanently about 30 years ago. I've lived in Claremont, Lake County, for 19 and a half years. I've been very active in city politics, particularly city council, for 18 of those 19 and a half years. I can honestly say I think I might have missed six city council meetings in all of that time. And two of those were because the doctor said I had to have open heart surgery. No, I couldn't convince someone to let me out to come to the city council. I decided to run after being asked several years to do so because regular game, a good friend of mine, who was a council member for some 15 or 16 years, had decided that he was not going to run again. I want to continue with Ray's principles of government. Ray approached government with an open mind, an open ear, and an open heart. He always listened. He listened intently. He didn't always agree. But I want to continue that for Claremont. And more importantly, I really want to revert back to what I used to call my Republican Party. Our race is a nonpartisan race, but I've been a Republican registered voter since I was 18. But I've been left. I want to come back. I want the party to come back to me. Thank you.
Edboh Nsua, seat four.
How's everybody doing today? Good, 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 good. My name's... Most of you guys actually know me already, but for those of you who don't, my name is Edboh Nsua. A little bit about myself. I was born in Toronto and my family actually immigrated here from West Africa. And I've been resident of Claremont since 2001, 2002. I'm a product of the Lake County school system. Went to elementary school, middle school, and graduated from East Ridge when I eventually went off to Florida State University. Played football there while double majoring in international affairs and sociology. Go Nors. I know right now we're not doing too well. I know Rob is pretty happy about that, but hey, we'll be back. It's all good. We'll be back. After I graduated, I actually moved up to Washington DC where I worked as a legislative aide for our now governor, Ron DeSantis. I worked on his staff, working on education policy, also helping out with trade and commerce policy as well. So worked up there for about two years. And when he decided that he was going to run for governor, I decided I wanted to take a risk and I wanted to be more involved with my city back home in Claremont. My parents still live there. It's home for me, you know? And the community's been something that I've been a part of for a very long time. I've been on the planning and zoning board for over a year now, as well as the Lake County Library and Plaza Board. There's a lot of things I want to bring back to my city. In terms of personal liberty and responsibility, I think it's important that our youth and our students are actively involved in actually getting back to the education and the curriculum that actually benefited us. And when I say that, I mean apprenticeships and I also mean small business partnerships as well. So some of the things I want to do are to create a small business apprenticeship program with our small business owners and with our students as well. That way they can use it for credit. Small business owners can have incentives through local government. And the city just has a better partner. Lately, the city has been working for its residents and I want to change that. So when the government is actually working for you, that's when we can get things done. So thank you, guys.
City of Groveland, Mike Smith, District four.
Good evening. So I went to other little school up there, Kings Point. So I sailed for six years after graduating. It's the maritime academy across the bay from this. We call it Big Road. Anyway, I sailed for about six years and I went to the Coast Guard on active duty for the next 25 years. Got a chance to see most of the United States from inside out. And I've worked for private industry for a while. Then started my own business, a small business owner. Still run that casual job between my council gigs. And I started and ran for council two years ago, won and unopposed this year. So I don't happen to put a run against me. But the things I pushed for, and the reason I came into it was because what I saw was the dysfunction that was going on with the city of Groveland at the time, for those that are local. However, remember that I asked for transparency. I want to see transparency, which we didn't see. And I think a government in the sunshine is really a good thing for us and it's going to make us all better. I wanted to see us start to move towards a model of excellence. How do we become the better example for all the others? How do we do the best that we can do? Smart growth. We hear that all the time. But there is a way of how you can preserve the environment, how you can preserve the things that you like about an area and at the same time grow your city, grow your citizens. So along those lines, this year, probably the big focus that we're going to look to try and do is to start doing some master plans. Master plans for our parks recreation, master plans for our land use, master plans for water, waste, water, storm, water. So having a chance to go out there in the community and engage the community and develop these master plans will allow us to better understand what the community is looking for, understand what is important to our citizens, and to be responsive and to them in their needs. So I thank you very much for the opportunity to be here tonight and to talk with you and meet with you. So thank you very much.
From the city of Minneola, Paul Giacalone, seat five.
Paul Giacalone, G-I-A-C-A-L-E. Giacalone.
Giacalone.
I still have problems with myself. I'm originally from Brooklyn, New York. And don't hold that against me. It's a great place to live. It really was when I was growing up. And I moved here in 2009. I've been in door and hardware for about 20 years. I was a locksmith and did access control, installed doors, kind of life safety stuff. And that was before I was... After I was an options trader on the floor for World Trade Center. Traded options on street. Moving along in the door and hardware industry. In 2007, 2008, the market was declining. My business wasn't doing so well. So I closed it up and I moved here to Lake County, which was the greatest thing I've ever been in my life. Lake County's a wonderful place to live. I love it here. And my kids, the schools are absolutely fantastic. I took a job with the Lake County School Board as their locksmith for about seven years. And I did it as a servant because I was identically from the 1478 Cincinnati. And I loved doing it. I loved every minute of helping the teachers, helping the students, being involved. That was my thing. I loved to be involved with the community. I didn't just want a job and be able to make money. It didn't mean anything to me. What meant something to me was to serve and to do well. I'm also very active in my church. I play guitar. I sing. I love the Lord. The first thing I would like to do in Minneola, bring prayer back. What you did tonight was wonderful. Praying before, the Pledge of Allegiance is a wonderful thing because we really need to have our hearts right with God. And don't matter what God you are, you serve, or whatever God you worship, that's yours. I worship Jesus.
Thank you, Paul. Joseph Saunders, seat five.
Good evening. Good evening. Been Minneola's city councilman on seat five for the last 10 years. I ran for council the first year because Minneola had a lot of problems. I don't know whether you've been here long enough to know that, but we were in the newspapers all the time. We had people on TV all the time. We had the fire department shut down. And I won't go on and on, but our police department and our fire department and everything is pretty much straightened out now. We've come a long way in the last 10 years. The city's running well. In the first year, we had to reduce the staff of the city. We were way overstaffed. Reduced it by almost 30%. We cut $2 million out of the budget to keep the city from going into financial bankruptcy. In fact, over the years, we've done several things to keep our taxes the same. We don't raise taxes. And we believe we have a crime safe city. We have the lowest crime rate in South Lake County. And we have the highest education rate in all of Lake County. So we do our best to make Minneola the best city it can be. For my part, I come from a long line of engineering. I worked for a company for 42 years. I was a sergeant in the army and a professional musician at one time. And I do my best to keep Minneola as pure and simple as it can be. My background is engineering primarily. I was an engineering manager for a high-tech company that made equipment for semiconductor manufacturing. That sounds like very technical, but takes a lot to explain. But all in all, I love Minneola and I'd do anything for it. Thank you.
City of Mount Dora, Mayor Nick Jerome.
Thank you very much. Thanks for having me here today. Just a little bit about myself. Came from New Jersey, Viola, New Jersey. It's also one of those little Philadelphia-area cities, but it's in New Jersey. And I came here in 2010. And my background, I have a bachelor of science degree in industrial management. Worked 10 years as an industrial engineer with Cincinnati Millicron and Moser Safe Company when I was out in Midwest. I got a master's degree from Glasgow State College, which is now Rowland University. So Rowland gave me also a master's degree in that also. So I got two of them, but it's actually one thing, but they both came together at the same time. So I got that and I've worked about 16 years as a... Not work, I'm making sense of work. As a school board member in Viola, New Jersey. I have 16-plus years as a school board member, plus 20-some years as a school business administrator. That's my master's, a school business administrator. So with that, I came to Mount Dora and to be retired. And that lasted about, not even two years. And in 2012, I ran for city council. And I beat 110 companies at the time for an at-large seat of basketball waters. And I reran again in 2014. And that was the election, if you guys remember. It ended in a dead tie that year. And I lost to a hat-tron, to Marie Rich. And that's what kind of got me into running for the mayor's position because it was open that year to follow the year in 2015. And I had three choices, so I decided to run for mayor. Being the mayor, I really tried to work on three things. To transparency and accountability, communications, and also doing all the work for the rest of the city. Make sure that they are treated as number one. With that, we try to stabilize our tax rate. And we do that by doing, looking at our economic development that we have going throughout the whole city. So with that, thank you all. Take some questions later. Thank you.
Now to the city of Taveris, David Boilston, seat two.
Hi. Name's David, obviously. And I can say that this is actually my first rodeo. So don't make sense too often, but I'm not really... I'm pretty new to this. But my father, when he was in law school in Statford, his law professor told him to come and check out Lake County to start his family. He said that when you come to Lake County and you are good in Lake County, Lake County is good to you. And I have found this to be one of the most true statements I've ever heard in my entire life. This place is truly a treasure. And I want to keep that going to the best of my abilities. I'm a fiscal conservative downright to the bottom. And I believe in... I believe in fiscal responsibility and making sure that we don't have to subsidize the growth of the city by paying for... Or I'm sorry, using the growth to cost the city money by... I'm sorry. I'm really sorry, guys. I'm not good at this. I just hurt. But I don't... Basically, my point is this. I want to try as hard as I can to do the right thing. And I believe that the fiscal responsibility and understanding what we're talking about with making the correct decisions for the future is very important. And I think everyone knows that. But I plan on staying here my whole life. And I plan on raising kids here and a family. And I'm very excited to be here. And I'm very glad you guys love to talk to you. So, thank you.
Lou Buegas, seat two.
Good evening. Thank you all for being here and taking time out of your busy schedule to come here. It's great to see some friends in the crowd and some family and some alumni from our 2015 leadership Lake class, Ben Boilston and Chief Rodaway. Why am I running for Taveris City Council? It's pretty simple. During tough economic years, the city of Taveris afforded me the opportunity to open a business. And as a result of that, giving back to the community I love has become a priority and has led me to run for city council. My business background, my business foundation, my commitment to my community and my community involvement will be an asset to the city. Wanting what's best for Taveris unites us. My commitment, tenacity, and work ethic set me apart from my other candidates. And I hope to earn the vote of the city of Taveris voters that are in the audience tonight. Thank you.
James Sweater, seat two.
Thank you. Like, David, I'm new to the rodeo. But thank you for having me here. I grew up in Michigan. Spent 25 years in Cleveland, Ohio. I was a textbook buyer at two colleges. And there were a lot of industry. I have a background in industrial development, community development, and a minor in urban studies. Yeah, explain prior. Let me correct my education permit. It's called industrial occupational sociology and anthropology, with emphasis on small business management. So I just shortened it up. I believe in fiscal responsibility. I believe that firmly. I'd like to see us continue to lower our mortgage rate. And as our community grows, that'll give us more funding. And hopefully we don't have to raise our taxes. If we can lower them. I'd like to see us have moderate development. Development that benefits the city. I like our hometown atmosphere downtown and the fact that all of our chains are living on the outskirts of Taveris. I want to see our downtown enhanced and our waterfront, which has been torn up for a couple of years. Getting it... I'm looking forward to getting it back on track and making it recreational, functional for the city. I think that's about it. Short and to the point.
Bottom row, seat two.
Thank you. Glad you all could make it tonight to listen to the candidates. I showed up, Mike Roddwell. Born in Orlando, Florida. Moved up here, young, serving my family. Graduated from Taveris High School, after which I joined the Marine Corps. After that, I came back to Taveris, started a family, started my own business. I still have that business today, a construction company that I own and proud of that. I was fortunate enough to serve on the Taveris City Council for a little over eight years, a little over six years as mayor in the past. And with the city then, we did a lot of good things. The city grew quite a bit. I was glad to be part of it. I was glad to help implement an impact exemption. And talk about limited government. We exempted at that point $1.8 million of impact fees and it created over $50 million worth of new constructions. That's a significant amount. And that helped during a recession. A lot of people saving business, you know? Saving working, paying bills, and expanding the city. It's a very great place. And I'm glad to be part of that. So when you look at it, you know, limited government, some things of that come to nature. You know, and also you have, talking about, I'm sure you have some of your goals. Free enterprise, personal liability, personal liberty, and personal responsibility. I believe property rights are huge for different individuals who want to, you know, develop their land as they want to. They should have that right without restrictions. The restriction's already there with future land use, like... The restriction is already there with future land use, like, developed, constituent of here today. So, um, I look forward to getting back on the city council and seeing the city of Taveries move forward in a positive way. And once again, to thank you all for showing up.
Walter Price, seat four.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. It's nice to see so many familiar faces in the audience. And to give you a little background, I've lived in Taveries now for almost forty years. I raised my children here. I'm raising some of my grand, I'm not raising my children. I'm raising grandchildren here. My children went to the Taveries school system. And I've owned my own business here for twenty-seven years. And, uh, Taveries is just the place that I intend to call home for the rest of my life. I have served in the past. Uh, I was the chairman of the CRA Committee for the city of Taveries before the city council disbanded that committee. Because, I'll tell you why they did it. They, the city, as they do now, they present a lot of stuff to the city councils and various boards and they expect them to just rubber stamp it. And we wouldn't rubber stamp some of the stuff. Uh, some of the stuff they wanted to do was very unfeasible. And, uh, their solution was to get rid of the committee. So, uh, the, uh, as far as myself, I'm a fiscal conservative. Uh, I'm very fiscal conservative. I have conservative values. I've always had conservative values with any registered Republican my whole life. And I'm, I'm proud to say that I do represent you. I am currently the chairman of the Republican Party for Lake County. And, uh, we have about a thirty thousand voter registration of Republicans over Democrats in this county, which I'm very happy of and I want to keep it growing. As far as, uh, limited government, the cities are just out of control with their regulations. The other day, the, the city council was presented an item of $16,000. They were going, they were going to have $16,000 extra dollars and what they want to do is spend with it. And they said, "Well, why don't we repair the roads?" All right, well, I'll be glad to answer questions later. Thank you.
Thank you, Walter. Price, can you, seat four.
Thank you all very much for being here. I just want to let you know, I've been a part of this community for well over forty years now. I graduated from Taveries High School. I went on to Lake Superior Community College. I got my degree in business finance from UCF. My wonderful wife and I, we have been married for twenty-one years. We're currently raising our twenty, our sixteen-year-old son. He's a junior at Taveries High School. We're very proud of him. After a bicycle accident that left me paralyzed when I was fourteen years old, the people of Lake County, they came together and they helped me and my family. They raised funds to help me purchase a wheelchair accessible van. The community has given so much to me and my family. I've never forgotten this and that's why I really enjoy serving this community. I've served on the Taveries City Council for the past three years. During this time, I've gained valuable experience. Experience that I will build on as I continue to serve this great city. During my time on the council, our city tax rates have decreased while maintaining a high level of service and ensuring that our infrastructure is well taken care of for generations to come. This year, I'm proud to say that Taveries had the largest millage decrease of any other city in the entire county. And while absorbing higher costs due to the fact that costs do go up every year, we have been able to increase reserves, increase road paving funding, take care of the hard-working employees. And we are able to replace a overused or a much-needed playground that we've had for several years. I also am a strong supporter of businesses coming to Taveries. We provide the amenities that businesses are looking for. With a strong business community that helps keep our tax rates lower. According to our very own property appraiser, Taveries added the most new commercial buildings in two thousand and nineteen. Twenty-four in Taveries, followed by twenty-one in Clermont. I had a conversation recently with a business owner and he was very happy with the way things are going in Taveries. And I want to keep us moving forward. So please remember Troy Singer, the very fifth.
All right, to the town of Montverde, Alan Hardle, council member.
Good evening, one of all. I'm Alan Hardle. Was born and raised in Clemmont, sixty-one years. I've seen the change. I'm a third-generation citrus, or was until the freezes of eighty-five. My grandparents used to talk about how Highway Fifty was a horse-and-buggy model two. It didn't exist. So I know a lot about Montverde. I know a lot about Taveries and Lake County. I'm a resident. I got my feet wet in politics because of my mother. My mother was in unincorporated Lake County down in Clermont. And she went to Clermont City Council, Miniola, Montverde. And she became a regular picture, picture of those communities before the freezes of eighty-three. And we watched the developments of South Lake County explode. I enjoy where I'm at. I was one of the dirty dozens, as we call them in our town of Montverde, those twelve who show up every council meeting, whether you need to or not. So I'm sitting there and we had a, a issue on the town of Lake County going on about adult entertainment. And it was passed by our council, what we were going to do. So I made this comment, "Well, why don't we just, all of our new developments have a thousand, has to be a thousand-foot buffer." And I said, "Why don't we make all of our new developments a come-in-town mandatory park? So you go a thousand feet from there, so it'll never happen." And my mayor says, "That's a great idea. You want to be on P and Z?" And I said, "Let me think about it." He goes, "No, I'll write your name down. You're on P and Z." So I was on P and Z for two years, enjoyed it. I learned all those acronyms about PUDs and everything else. It looked very interesting. My, uh, one of our incumbents became very critical heel and since passed away, I was asked by the council to fill this slot. I said, "Okay, I will." Been unopposed the last two council runs. I enjoy it. One of the things we've done in Lake County and our part of Lake County, we changed our development to one little word, from gross to net. You will not build in Montverde on anything less than a half acre. We're the first in the city, the state has done that and it's made a big difference. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, I'd like to thank all the candidates. Now we're going to enter into our audience questions. The candidates will be given one minute to answer. And here's a question that goes to the, any of the candidates from the city of Clermont. And the question is this. The 2018 millage rates range from 3.3 to 9.7. Explain the prior millage rates for your city for the last three years and how you compare to the other thirteen cities in the county. Either defend or, either defend the new proposed millage or explain why millage needs to be reduced versus other cities. And any of the Clermont candidates can begin for one minute.
I would, by default. I am happy to say that Clermont's proposed budget for the upcoming year is the same as it's been for five years, millage rate-wise. Think about that. Five years with the growth that you all know that Clermont has experienced and all the demands that growth puts on infrastructure. And yet, they still have been able to hold the millage rate at the same level. It's true, with all the growth comes new taxable base, of course. And that has been the savior, root for Clermont. Each year, the reserves have been increased. Each year, I'm happy to say, the police and fire, uh, which are near and dear to my heart personally, have always been supported 100% by the council and by the budget. And this year, chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the budget contains cameras for every officer on the street. I'm proud of Clermont and I'm proud of how they have conducted themselves fiscally up till now. It's my goal to see if that continues. Thank you.
If I could, I apologize for not standing up, but I was up at this chair with you.
Speak up, Joe.
I'm sorry. I want to add to what Jim said. And I, it's just a compliment for the existing city council and the people who run Clermont. That accomplishment of maintaining our millage rate comes in front of balance. Almost exponential growth in both populations and business. And they've been able to do that. And this is not a feather in my cap, because I knew it this game, but I think it is a feather in their cap. And I'm proud to be a member of the Clermont citizenry, because I think I've done a magnificent job accomplishing that goal. It's not easy to do.
Thank you, Joe. Very good. That same question from the audience goes to the city of Taveries. So who in the city of Taveries would like to respond to that question? I'll read it again. 2018 millage rates range from 3.3 to 9.7. Explain the prior millage rates for your city for the last three years and how you compare to the other thirteen cities in the county. Either defend the new proposed millage or explain why millage needs to be reduced versus other cities.
I'll start with that. And like I said before, I'm very proud of the city of Taveries. Our council had a priority this year, and that was to reduce the millage. And that's exactly what we did. And like I said, the city of Taveries reduced their millage by the largest decrease of any other city in the entire county. And that's something I'm very, very proud of. And this shows the fiscal responsibility that I have and our city council has. And I want to see that continue.
It is true that Taveries is proposing to lower their millage rate by 2% this year. But that's going up against a 9% increase in property value. So the net result is we're getting a tax increase in Taveries. And their budget this year increased 60% from last year's budget. So I also did an analysis on the tax bills. And if you take Taveries out of your tax bill, each year, our taxes have gone up about 1% a year if you take all the county's, uh, group's taxes. Taveries by itself has gone up an average of 3.3% per year in taxes. So my question is, are the citizens of Taveries getting three times the amount of benefits that everybody else is? Because they're certainly paying three times the amount.
Thank you, Walter.
Well, that's it. You know, I'm glad to see the city of Taveries this past year reduced their millage rate. Yes, there's still an increase, minor in taxes. I do know, I mean, my property tax for the city of Taveries went $5.19 this year on my term notice. That's minor to me. One thing that the city of Taveries has to absorb, though, is all the Lake County buildings that don't pay anything that are in downtown Taveries. City taxpayers hit three times for fire service. When you think about it, they pay the cities, they have to find, they have to do county buildings. They get a small number back, not full. And then, when the taxes that the city residents also pay to the Lake County General Fund through their taxes, the General Fund helps subsidize the Lake County fire assessment tax. It doesn't cover all the expenses. So the city of Taveries tax will go up a little bit this year. Figure it out whatever they go on. But it's still less than what the millage is less, the taxes more, no doubt. It'd be nice to see it drop more, but there's a lot of things that still have to take place. Infrastructure needs to be redone. Get the highway on the roads a long time.
Thank you, Robert.
I'd like to take the issue regarding the, uh, the budget going up 60%. The budget went up 60%, but so did the revenue and the expenses also went up. Because that includes redoing the docks, which we're getting insurance reimbursement for that. And the underline and there's certain other things on there, so it did not go up 60%.
Thank you, Lou. Anyone else from Taveries? Yes, David.
I think it's incredibly important to keep the, uh, the rate low because we know that, um, what makes Taveries great specifically, I think, is that people in it. And I don't want the people in Taveries to be priced out of Taveries over time. And I certainly don't want to find a new home. And I want to make sure that I can afford to live in the city of them. So, thank you.
Thank you, David.
If I can, I kind of agree with Robbie. Because my taxes went up $5 according to the term notice, $5.50. I think it's important that we keep building for our infrastructure and keep lowering our millage rates and taking care of our empty properties, because we have to. But we're controlling what's going up. Property value goes up, I can't help that. It's what happens. It happens throughout Lake County. It just happens that where we're at, my value, property value, didn't go up as much as everybody else's. But I'll pay it to make my city a better place.
Thank you, James. Anyone else from Taveries on that question? If not, I'll move on to the next question. This question is directed at Walter Price from the audience. Here it goes. It says, "How do you plan to lead the Republican Party of Lake County in the upcoming presidential election while doing your duties as a city council member?"
Well, uh, I guess the simple response to that is multitasking. I mean, I'm currently running my own business. And I happen to be busier than I've been in the first thirty years right now. Uh, I'm campaigning for the Taveries City Council and I'm running the party. And I'm getting it all done. I'm not having, I'm not falling behind on any of the things I have to do, my obligations. The election is November 5th. That's coming right up. So, uh, once the, uh, the council is seated, you know, on November 5th, they meet twice a month. I know they have other liaison activities they do. But, uh, it won't be as much time as I'm even devoting now campaigning. I mean, this is my third event today. And so, uh, you know, I've just, I've always worked hard, continue to work hard.
Thank you, Walter. Our next question, and this could go to any candidate who's willing to answer it from the audience.
They'll all stand up.
It says, "What is the most pressing issue facing your city?" Paul.
You know, I, um, besides working for Lake, Lake County schools, I now work for the, uh, Fire Department. I'm a fire inspector, certified by the state. And, and we have a lot of safety code. And a lot of the communities that are going in have very narrow streets. And there's a possibility that we can't get a fire truck down. So here, here are some of the issues that we're facing in Miniola where no people are parking on the streets. We're, we're building homes that are four, fifty feet wide, a lot. There, there's six bedrooms on one home, six bedroom in the other home. I mean, you're just mad. How many cars are you going to have in that driveway? It only fits two. You're going to get two in the garage, if you can get two in the garage. So you're going to have a bunch of cars in the street. You're going to have a lot of people trying to get, can't hear me, I'm sorry. A lot of people, you know, trying to get through the streets. My kid almost got run over a couple of times. Just two weeks ago, there was a deaf kid who, who almost got hit by a car and fell, got hurt. And the car just took off on him. So, you know, these, these are some of the issues. Life safety is very inexpensive for the city to deal with. So life safety issues is what I'm.
Thank you, Paul. Joe raised his hand.
It's not necessarily the most pressing issue, because the most pressing issue is the accomplishment of Clermont's best of flying all the time. That's the biggest block we're moving up the hill. But one that's getting a lot of light and heat right now is the definition of affordable housing and the growth in apartment communities. There's a, um, moratorium that was just resolved yesterday, I think, for a six-month moratorium on the building of multi-family homes. And that, that definition in the city is three families and above in one living structure. It's getting a lot of attention because different people are concerned about the kind of folks who move into apartments. Are they transient? Are they short-term? Demand on city services, what's that going to be? And how do we keep turning these things over? At the same time, you've got independent business people who allow it to buy land and build structures. So that issue is, is, I think Clermont City Council did a reasonably good job. They're trying to figure out how to deal with it. They said stop for six months.
Thank you. Nick.
Can you guys maybe guess what our pressing problem is in Mount Dora? It has parking. So we're trying, we're trying to get that thing all fixed up so we can have all the down there at one time and have a lot of parking spots. But, uh, just, just for a quick slide on that, the city manager and I, since two thousand and sixteen, were negotiating with the owners of the post office property. And they wanted a lease to us. We wanted to buy it. And so for three years, we went back and forth, back and forth with them. So finally, we told them, we just couldn't come up with a lease arrangement that they were looking at. It wasn't beneficial, financially beneficial to the city. So we, you know, we stopped the negotiation process. They turned around this little building a week later. And we've been offering for three years, Blackstone. So it was very disconcerting from that standpoint that they did that to us. But we're in negotiations with other entities throughout the city to hopefully, within a year. These things take time, but eventually, well, hopefully, within a year. a year, these things take time, but eventually, well, hopefully within a year, we can have an announcement about where we're going to put a nice parking garage in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. I believe that Claremont is a victim of its own success, specifically in transportation. Claremont's unique in that it's constricted by federal, county, and state highways, with very little control over any of the roads within Claremont, at least the major roads. I really, really hope, no matter who gets elected to the city council in Claremont in this election, we reach out and better communicate with the county commissioners of our needs. It seems that our requests are basically just sloughed off. I don't understand why, other than there's just no real communication between the two entities. We need relief, and we need the county to be stepping up, including a gas pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Ebo.
Yeah, so I mean, Joe and, Joe and Jim definitely hit up on a lot of it, right? I was going to say mainly for the most part, economic development, and that obviously constitutes growth, and obviously constitutes Claremont's Master Plan as well. The Master Plan has a, it's got a lot of good things, and at the same time, there's a lot of things that are a bit more expensive and things that we need to be smart about in regards to the money that we're paying. I know most of you guys who have driven in and out of Claremont have seen the two watchtowers that are sitting up there, and over $400,000 that's been spent on that. So it's definitely things like that that we need to look at, and we definitely need to reassess. Also, when we're talking about economic development, Claremont actually does not have a true economic development director right now. Our previous elected director, Shannon Smith, actually stepped down around two, two years ago or so, and now the job is being held by two different people in two different positions. So I think we definitely need to open up another economic development office, and definitely need to have somebody whose sole purpose is to work on and work with small businesses, as well as working with our county commissioners and our other elected officials as well.
Yes, Mike.
So even though I'm not running, I'm going to give you a little quick thing on Grover's side. The question to me is one that's hard to answer. I'm going to really think about it up here, but the issues you started to hear raised, workforce housing, it's a dire need within this area as a whole. We just brought a new plant in with Kroger, going to bring 350 jobs to the town. How do we, how do we put up housing for them? How do we have schools that are adequate to service that community? We have to work with those. We're getting all these new places, we have a lot of water. How are we going to deal with the water supply? We think we have lots of water, because we're surrounded by it, but water is a critical infrastructure piece that we are starting to run up against caps on, you know, lots of different ways. Firstly, we have a problem downtown with our State Route 50. Back in the day, the representatives were coming out of Grover, they were the power, and they made that route run right through the center of town, because back in the 1930s, having that road come through town was great. It was a great economic thing. Now I got 1,900, 20,000 trucks a day that come through on the corner, so I can't do anything with my downtown, if you know what I'm going to say. So I think it's not one problem, but there's a lot that has to be worked together to solve a lot of the vicious river things. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. I'm going to move on to the next question, if I could. Or, go ahead, Alan.
I'll take it quick. Montburg is a bed and breakfast community. We understand that from Orlando, I think most of Lake County is that too. We are not a major industry, heavy industry, lighting industry. The county commissioners are trying to work on that. Our big problem is growth. We will fight growth. We listen to all the uses and surrender and the Red Wing, these lots, forty by sixty. Growth has to be controlled, and it's a hard thing for developers to say no to them, when it's a vicious circle. You start getting impact fees for higher density, that's great. Ten, fifteen years now, one of your roads are shot, who pays for that? Not the developers. The impact fees are designated for certain things, they're gone. It's the residents, the taxpayers. Now all of a sudden, you're forcing this august people right to raise your taxes. If you say no, no means no. We developed our book in Montburg, developers, you're going to get a half acre. You can fight and scream all you want. That's the, the aesthetics of Montburg. We want it that way, we'll keep it that way, we'll fight that way. We wish Claremont and Minneola would do the same.
Thank you, Alan. I'm going to move on to another question. This is directed at the candidates for the city of Taveras. Candidates for the city of Taveras, why have a bond issue for a performing arts? Is that a fiscally conservative position? Anybody want to jump on that?
I'd say no, it's not. The Performing Arts Center has gone too far in the city of Taveras. It should never have went to where it's at now. The money never should have been spent on its consulting fee, on its study. I think the grandiose idea that it was always going to be too expensive, and it's not feasible to be fiscally responsible for the city of Taveras and the taxpayers and the residents. So that's my stance on the Performing Arts Center.
Actually, the smart thing the council has done has been to put it up for the vote, so hopefully the voters will vote their wish not to spend the dollars on it, if that's what their wish is.
At the current time, according to the budget director for the city of Taveras, the city of Taveras has $65 million of debt. We're getting ready to add $8 million more for a public work building, and the Performing Arts Center is another $27 million. That adds up to $100 million of debt. And if you ask me, for a city of 17,000 people, $100 million of debt is just ridiculous.
I just want to say that I don't think we need attractions in Taveras, because I think Taveras is the attraction. I don't think we need that.
Thank you, David. Yes, Troy.
Yes, Performing Arts Center has been something that's been kicked around by various councils for probably the past eight years. The city council, two years ago, originally, we were told that we were going to try to go in a partnership with a college or something. At the time, we were looking at $120,000 for a study to be done. That came back to council after the college decided not to go in, go through with that. I voted no against coming up with the other $60,000 to do the $120,000 study. The rest of the, the other, three other council members voted to go and go through with that study. So the study was done, there was a large, it was a large amount that came back to the project. We told the designers they needed to go back, that was just way too high, and they came back with an amount of $27 million. Now, I can see the economic benefits that a Performing Arts Center could possibly bring, but then when you look at the cost that it is to the citizens, that's what I had a problem with, and that's why we put the voters to make that decision, because that's not something that can be made by five council members.
If, if I may?
Yes, you may.
The question of Performing Arts in Taveras, I think it's a great idea, I think it's a great concept, problem, and I think it's great that we're taking it to the voters. The biggest problem, and I think it's been overlooked, is the long-term cost factor. Is it ever going to pay for itself? That's the question. It, yeah, it's great for involving the community, the college, the school board. It's got potential. But is it worth the cost? That's a question everybody in Taveras got to ask.
Thank you, James. Anyone else? Very good. I'll move on to the next question. This one is directed at Nick Jerome. By Mount Dora, business taxes are going up. Why do you need this after adding new fire tax?
Business taxes.
That's the question.
I don't think we raise any specific business tax. I know the different places in town have their, the tax rates have gone, not the tax rate has gone up, but their tax bill has gone up, because our kind of property values went up at a higher rate than most of the other cities in the, in the city, around in the county. The, one of the reasons that Mount Dora's a little different position than some of the other communities here is, or right now, is our commercial values. We do not have as much commercial values as a lot of the other cities do. So one of the things that we're doing is looking at our Wolf Ranch Innovation District and some of the other areas of our economic development and our growth patterns that we do have on, on the Route 441, the expansion there, the Triangle District, the Highland Street area, plus the Wolf Ranch Innovation District, which is going to bring in a lot of development over there, as far as some commercial growth. And with that, we should be able to keep our tax rate, our tax millage rate on that way, bring that downward in the future years.
Thank you, Nick. Very good. The next question goes to any candidate that's willing to answer. Will you pledge not to raise property taxes, including going to the rollback rate? Will you oppose fire assessment taxes?
I will. In fact, we did that in Minneola. We reduced, we reduced the tax rate when we implemented the fire assessment fee. And the concept of the fire assessment fee, I worked kind of hard on, because in, in my opinion, the fire department ought to be funded separately from the general fund, so that it's never affected by the downturn in the property values or the restriction of the state in terms of how much it can raise the millage rate. Right now, we have a $59 fire assessment fee. It doesn't cover the total cost of the fire department. We're going to forward that for this coming year. But ultimately, my goal in implementing the fire assessment fee was to fund the fire department individually. I'd love to do it with the police department, but there are restrictions on that.
Very good. Thank you, Joseph. Yes, Nick.
I'll take it real quick on there, because we did raise our fire assessment fee this year, and the $219, from a $50 rate in the past. The $50 rate was used for two years to fund two brand-new fire trucks for the city, and, but this new one is to fund three new fire stations that are desperately needed in the city. We have one building that is almost totally getting ready to fall down, and the age is, and the condition of the building is really bad. Needs to be replaced, we have reports and everything on that to be, that was looked at. We have another station that is being shared with the police department. It is in a bad spot also, with that's where we built a station, a separate station for that over on Leonard. And then the east side of the town is also where the growth is going to be happening, is targeted also for another station over there. We have two under contract now, and the third one is being negotiated on, we're deciding on that. So our fire assessment fee is being used for brand-new fire stations and the equipment to go into those stations.
Thank you, Nick.
I want to add to what Joe was saying, you know, I'm not right here to fight with him or anything, you know, he did a great job, he's there ten years. But as I said before, I work for the fire department in, with Orange County Fire Rescue, and I can tell you that, you know, just implementing some of these fire, one-on-one fire safety codes and standards, the fire department could actually generate revenue from it. We probably won't even have to put up a tax fee. So if we get the fire department on board to, to go ahead and actually, you know, permit and give them the authority, have the jurisdiction to go ahead and do this, they could, they could generate their own revenue for permitting. So we wouldn't have to raise any fire assessment.
Thank you, Paul. Yes, Alan.
Town in Montburg had the same issue that many of our sister bigger cities have, and we've moved our fire out of our general budget, which is a hard thing to do. We're at $80 for our assessment, but we still, as a council, we're doing our budgets now. We had to, we still have to supplement the fire department. There's a lot of things in the fire department that we have, most cities I can speak, do not have control over. A lot of the federal regulations that come down, you've got no vote in it. When they tell you your tire's got to be changed every X amount of thousand miles, whether that engine sits there or not, bingo, they're six grand right out the door. Somebody's got to pay for that. We've found that our voters and our residents have a problem with the fact that it's like a dump. Everybody wants a dump, needs a dump, but you don't want it in your backyard. Everybody wants the fire department, but they don't want to pay for it. But yet, when the fire bell rings and your house is on fire, you're sure glad they show up and the EMS service comes with it. And so there's a cost you have to realize. Look, it costs to be alive, or you're going to pay it.
Thank you. Nobody else comment on that question? I'll move on to the next one. This is another audience question to all. Anyone interested in answering it? It says, "Are you or are you not in favor of using your elected position to advocate or oppose causes that have nothing to do with your position as an elected official?"
Can you repeat that again?
My answer is yes and no.
So you're trying to say, as an elected official, you're willing to stick your nose in other people's business that you don't belong in? I would say, no, I'm not.
I'm not sure where that, that came from this audience, though.
Yes, Joe.
I think it's an answer to the question, okay. An elected official has responsibilities and hopefully integrity, but the use of his office for other interests that are not associated with why they got elected to that office, and using that office to leverage other issues, I think is almost unethical and wrong. However, it doesn't mean that an elected official can't take personal interest in, as I do, in disabled veterans or the homeless, whether I'm an elected official or not, unless I'm carrying a big sign that, hey, I'm on the city council, therefore do this. There's a fine line between the ethics on that question and not, and I'm not even sure I answered the question correctly, so I'm not sure I fully understood it.
Thank you, Joe. Ebo.
I, my take on it is, you know, if there's a conflict of interest, you know, you should obviously recuse yourself, and you know, if it's, if it's, you're working for the people. Like I said before, you're working for the people, the people aren't working for you. You know, you were elected and you were put in this position to serve the people. So sir, don't, don't go out through your own personal interest or your own personal aim. Do what's best for the city and work hard.
Thank you, Ebo. Yes, Alan.
Once again, Mount Dora for you. There are social issues that I think you need to get involved with, and you have to separate your personal from your political life. And we all have issues. Personally, I'm going through one in our 180 district, which doesn't affect us per se. It's actually in the city of Claremont, where rural Lake County, that the county commissioners has worked on this past week. It's toxic waste dump that EPA has not played around with for 34 years and pilled with it. I know the stuff that's in there, I've seen it firsthand, I've watched it on the wall. I interviewed with Rick Scott, Senator Scott's people, a couple weeks ago, and he asked me, are you an advocate or a lobbyist or something? I said, no, it's the right thing to do. And I said, if you know of an issue that's wrong, and you don't do anything about it, you're just as bad as guilty as the party that created the issue. So I think there's a line there where you have to step off the plate and say, it's not my backyard, but it's sure going to affect people. And that's what you got to go by.
Very good. Anyone else jump in on that one? Yes, Walter Wood.
Well, I would just say that if an issue comes up that the city has no business being involved in, especially when it's somebody else's decision to be made, they just shouldn't get involved in the first place.
Thank you, Walter. Very good. I'm going to move on. Yes?
A caveat, now, my background, I spent 25 years in the military there, and as an officer in the military, I had to many times not take a position on things outside. In other words, it's to be apolitical, if you could, with, with things. But that doesn't mean that you turn away and become immoral or forego the moral imperatives that may face you. So there's not a good, simple answer to that, but I think it does become a problem when you start becoming an advocate and using your position to force that advocacy out. So you should think very carefully as to how that works, and I think Walter and others have put it, my job is to serve the populace to which I've been elected, to serve, and to listen to what their, what their issues are, and to try and champion those issues for them as best I can. So not my issues, but how their issues work. So I would just say it's something that elected officials have to be very careful of in moving forward.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much. Anyone else? Before I move on to the next question. This one is for Mount Dora. Says, "What plans do you have specifically for the youth of the community? Recently, the baseball fields were left off of the Lakeland Park focus groups, and the bathrooms were overflowing for an entire season into the concession stand and sidewalks. Why won't the city approve netting between the fields?" Why won't the city approve netting between the fields? How much injury must occur?" Yes?
I'm sorry, the question's longer than my answer, by the way. No, we're in constant, with constant contact through our leisure services department, which handles all those issues with them, and when they, we have items that are addressed to us, we take our steps to go out there immediately and take care of the issues that are affecting. The netting that they're talking about, and between the fields is long, we have a whole series of fields out there in Lincoln Avenue area, and down the middle is an open pathway. So a lot of times, we put fencing behind all of the batting areas, extended fencing out over to help block any foul balls from going over. Occasionally, somebody can hit a ball, it's going to go out from one field, and it's going to land over to the middle area. And they were after, a couple years ago, they thought about putting the netting over this walkway. They came back to me last year and says, "No, they got, they put the netting behind the stands, or behind the batter's areas," and that was corrected the issues for them. Now this year, I think somebody got hit with a ball coming over into that, the walkway. So we're going to be looking at that again and seeing about that, but again, it's one of those small stacks we've got to get into budget and part of the plan.
Thank you, Nick. Very good. Next question. For any city not making videos of meetings, will you work to fund and improve transparency by implementing videos of meetings and post online?
Can I take that for Vance?
The video guy asked that.
Well, here's the thing, it's a great idea to do that, but that would mean that they would have to put the budget, the number in the budget, which would increase the dollars, so we don't want to do that, correct?
Out of $74 million?
We don't, we don't want to do that, regardless of how much it is, right? Then we would not have the interaction either of the folks in the audience, and I think that's really important to have. I think if we continue with technology, and people can sit in their living rooms in their pajamas and watch the city council meeting or any other meeting, you have no interaction. So where do we have that, if it's all videotaped?
We have him. We don't need to do that.
Exactly.
I'm not going to do it anymore.
I don't really see an issue with videotaping the city council and making sure everyone has the resource to go find out what happened. If you're not able to make a meeting because it's at an inconvenient time, because you're working late, I think it's very nice that you can go online, on YouTube, and watch the city council. I think it's very important, I think it's a good thing. I don't see any doubt.
Yes, Troy?
I would support, with some reservations, live video presentations of city council meetings. I think it involves, if you're a city mayor, I think Claremont has a lot to sell. There's a lot of things that go on, there are an awful lot of awards ceremonies at the city council meetings that a lot of the public doesn't know about, the performance of staff, employees, fire department, awards given to the police department. I think that's a thing for Claremont to show to the citizens. I would support that. You're going to have some issues with people getting on camera for the first time in their lives, but that is controlled by our mayor, who has a three-minute clock, which works really well, so the meetings proceed in lowly disciplined fashion. But I think promoting yourself as a city council and as a city is a plus that you have to do.
Ebbel?
I mean, it provides for true transparency. A lot of times, cities will have minutes or will have a bridge versions where they give you some type of information, but they leave some things out, or they leave some things out just for the sake of being brief. Having video and actually allowing to see what happens, who's talking, what they're saying, how long they're saying allows for true transparency and accountability. You're allowed to say, oh, you know, Claremont recently had an issue with the boat ramp. Somebody on the council said, they said one thing, another person in the audience said they didn't. How do we, who do we know is lying and who's not? Having a video, having that transparency will be able to discern who is talking, who isn't, and actually give people the answers early and informed.
Thank you, Ebbel. Alan has to stand up.
We, County Commissioner Sean Parks always decides, maybe because I'm one of the three people he knows that actually stays up at night and watches breakham. We're cameras, cameras. We know what's going on. Our town has a problem with it, which most towns do. We sent out all the meeting notices on a webpage and everything, and I got neighbors that come up to me and say, "When you pass that ordinance," I said, "six months ago, there was a first reading, a second reading, a third reading. If you don't pick up a piece of paper that says, 'Town Council is coming, these are the issues,' are you going to actually stay up at 9 o'clock at night and watch the reruns of your city council?" It's kind of a hard issue. With budgets being tight, you kind of say, "We want to invest in video and audio for seven people to watch it, or we'd rather use it for a service that can be used to actually benefit the community per se." But Tim, I actually do watch you, and you're doing good.
Thank you. Who was next? Troy, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll take that. You know, the City of Taverres, that's something that we've definitely looked into, but we're in the same boat. I mean, how many people are really going to watch the video? Is it really cost-effective? Plus, with the ADA requirements that you have now, it's not a matter of just shooting the video and putting it online. I mean, it is a cost effect, I mean, it's a very, very costly thing that you have to do in order to meet these new ADA requirements. I mean, we're having problems right now with, you know, the website.
Eustis does it.
Have people that, you know, go online, and, you know, they have these lawsuits that they're suing cities that aren't being ADA compliant. So that's one of the big issues that we're having right now, is trying to, you know, find out what's the best way to deal with ADA compliance when it comes to videos.
Paul, were you up?
Yeah. I'm for it. I know that the city of Vino, I know that we have a camera up there, you can see the red light. I'm on the planning and zoning committee, by the way, I didn't say that in Metro. I've been in there for six years, the planning and zoning committee with the city of Vino. And I can tell you, when I read the minutes, and we approve them, lots of times I look at that and say, you know, what happened to the compensation? I was there. But I understand that the people that take the minutes, you know, they have problems sometimes, they don't catch everything, whatever. And that's why the camera, the video would capture everything, you know, and so I believe that that's something that can be implemented.
Thank you, Nick. I have actually discussed this with the city manager, Darren Gray, a couple of times over the past 18 months, two years, and as someone said, I couldn't see who was speaking, there is a major cost to any municipality that wants to begin to videotape or livestream their meetings because of ADA. But people like Vance, and thankfully, we have a female Vance now in Claremont, who is videotaping. And the value of videotape is not to find out who's lying and who isn't, or who wasn't paying attention. It causes some stability in the meeting, because everybody that's talking knows that the world is watching, and they can hit re blind and see you flop over and over and over again. If we, if we had a Vance, we would not have some of the shenanigans that we've been having the last several years in Claremont's council, which is an embarrassment right now.
Well, you can tell everybody's age around here, there's no such thing as videotape anymore, so. It's all digital. No, we started, we started doing some live streaming, and so we put it on hold because we were informed by some attorneys, and because our PIA officer went to some of these meetings, and they learned a lot about doing the live streaming. The attorneys really caution you to go into live streaming unless you have your policy set in place ahead of time. Have a strong policy, you're going to need your attorneys to help you put a good policy together, and we're already having the budget, in our budget, to go back to live streaming, but we're going to make sure it's done right. And Troy brought up the issue there about the ADA. ADA is a big thing on it, and you have to make sure the format that you're using is going to be able to sneeze away at doing it, because you don't want your PIA officer spending two or three days doing the post-captioning and different things you have to do for the ADA requirements to put it out. So there's a lot to it, but we'll be doing it, we're going to get back into it again to answer our place, doing some videotaping and asking that question, and we'll be doing it again.
Thank you so much. We're running out of time here, we wanted to close at 8:00. I have one more question, if you guys would like to do one more question before we close. This question goes to the City of Taverres. It says, "The Taverres City Council has antagonized rural county residents by annexing and appropriating high-density developments not matching the neighborhood. Explain your stand on this and how to reduce conflicts." So that's directed at the City of Taverres.
I'll take that. I serve on planning and zoning for the City of Taverres, and it's probably the Shirley Shores item that the question is being talked about, and that was, the city was approached about annexing that area. And I was actually one of the only planning and zoning board members that insisted that the quality of life in that area should have been maintained, have a minimum of one-acre properties in there, have a minimum square footage under AC of 25 acres, of 24 acres worth of it. And that actually started the motion of having the one-acre parcels less crowding in that area to be able to complement that, that area there. And Taverres did not approach, it was, it was the developer that approached the city.
Thank you, Luke. Anyone else? Taverres?
Sure. The City of Taverres, along with the county and other cities, and the county of Seton High, is the aim for future growth and how to manage it. Well, the city said, okay. Developer came to the City of Taverres, wanted to, you know, develop property, and what they proposed was well within what the city had passed in their, you know, planning, zoning and, or land revenue regulations. The residents out there didn't like it, because they said it didn't fit what they live in. And that's untrue. Some of the houses out there are five acres from one house, some are 1/3 acres out there off Shirley Shores. I know, I drove the area, I grew up in that area for a little while. So it was well within what fit the whole area, it's just certain people didn't like it. And that's all it was, I believe, from listening and everything. And like I said, I'm for property rights and ownership. If you want to develop property under what the city is saying you have to do, which they were willing to do, they should be able to develop that property, that property.
Thank you. Anyone else? City of Taverres?
I'll take that.
Yes, Troy?
Yes, I too believe in property owners' rights to develop this property, the highest of its use. And we do not automatically, we have voluntary annexation of, you know, group wants to be annexed in the City of Taverres, and they meet the rules and regulations, then we allow that. But we do look into that, and that area that's out there, we're also, we are currently in our 20-year comp plan redesign. We're doing that right now, and that's going to tell us the direction that the City of Taverres is going to go in the next 20 years. And we're actually looking at adding an estate zoning of possibly, you know, five-acre lots, and that might be something that fits in with that area out there. And that's something that we're looking at right now.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? City of Taverres? Yes, Walter?
I think something that often gets overlooked in these developments, like the one in Shirley Shores, or the 240 apartment unit they just approved, is, is there any real demand in the marketplace for that product? When the Shirley Shores project first came online, they were proposing about $200,000 for a vacant two-acre lot, which is way out of whack with anything that's happening in the market. And that particular developer has a history of building developments, and then they watch it sit there empty for years and years and years and years because nobody's advising. Same with the apartment complex. Those are $1,500 to $1,800 a month rent, and are there that many people in Taverres with that kind of income that can really afford to live there? So I think growth, we need growth, but it needs to be responsible, and we need to just, you know, step back and take a look at some other factors.
All right, last chance, Taverres. Well, everybody, that concludes our question. Well, thank you to everyone of the candidates for showing up, and we need to keep a look at these guys. We have an election on November 5th coming up, right around the corner, and be sure to fill out our sign-up sheet if you want to be on distribution of the Republican Liberty Cockpit here in Wake Forest County. And I'd like to thank everyone, the audience for showing up, and God bless everybody, be well. Thank you, Mr. President.